Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good, I'll be someplace.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Is this, let me just check if this is going.
We'll follow Exeter Town Council regular meetings from Monday, December 2nd, 2024. The board will be.
I think that looks good.
Dan Patterson?
Yeah.
Ray Morrissey?
Yeah.
Diane Allen here. Olivia Francesco here. And Cal Lewis.
Yeah.
Okay, number three, acknowledgements and announcements. The town of Exeter will ring in the holidays with its fourteenth annual Christmas tree lighting on Thursday, December 5th, 2024 at 6:30 PM on the Town Clerk's Office Trump One, 675 Henry Road, Exeter Road Island. B, Exeter Public Library's annual youth craft fair will be held Saturday, December 7th, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, featuring youth artisans and many Christmas themed products. The library in partnership with Exeter Social Services, Exeter Rescue, Tri-County Community Action Agency, and Matthews Wish will conduct a special holiday drive to benefit local youth in need. Items for teens are especially desired. More information regarding the fair and holiday drive can be found on the library's webpage. The library will be closed for browsing on the day of the fair, but residents can still pick up their bowls. Santa will be making a special appearance to regale the kids. C, Town of Exeter Holiday closures, Tuesday, December 17th, Employee Appreciation Luncheon, 12 o'clock to 1 o'clock, all town offices and departments. Tuesday, December 24th, all-day Christmas Eve. Wednesday, December 25th, all-day Christmas Day. Tuesday, December 31st, half-day New Year's Eve. And Wednesday, January 1st, all-day New Year's Day. Item number D, the town council, and we have a past president here too with us, we'd like to recognize three decades of service for the Town of Exeter for Jim Maruzak, our town solicitor, who is finally going to retire, regretfully.
Right. Thank you, Jim.
I'm going to let you speak first, Cal, and then I'm going to have Dick, because I know you wanted to speak, so.
Well, Dan knows that. Just give me, give me a chance and I'll be happy to say something. And I'll tell you this, I was sitting on the council nearly, it was 30 years ago, when there was need to hire a new solicitor, and this gentleman applied for the job. The council was most impressed and voted that his law firm represent the town. And I can tell you, and those of you that have been sitting here can tell you, that the representation that this town has had, has been nothing short of exemplary. Oh, I don't want to be emotional. And I say that because I've sat for a number of different years, where Dan sits now, and as president of the council, there's a relationship with legal counsel that's significant. And Jim has been with this town, supporting what we needed, over and over again. You know that.
Yep.
You know that. Anybody else who, no, no, you were not council president, no.
I was.
Oh, right over here. Right over here, Kevin. Can't you say the same thing about Jim Maruzak?
Absolutely.
Exeter has been most fortunate. And this is one observation, and think about this, towns do not retain solicitors for long periods of time. It simply doesn't happen. And that consistency that we've had, for Jim representing us, has been remarkable. So, how do I feel about you leaving?
Not good.
Oops. Because I know that we're going to miss you greatly. There's a gentleman next to you that has been coming to meetings, and I guess he's interning here in Exeter. And I hope he can come back, and hope we don't scare him away. It's been, as you said, almost 30 years. It appears that in March of next year, it will be. So just a few months short of 30 years of service to Jim. And there's, there's no way that we can thank him, except, except there is something, Jim, that the council would like you to have, if Lynn would be kind enough to help. We have something we'd like to get you, Jim, to say thank you for so much of what you've done. There are no words. So, Jim, here, from the town.
Oh, no.
You already have one, Jim?
Shh.
It's not the original.
Wow, nice. But you see, you don't understand how significant that is, because that is a copy, and I should, Jim should say it, tell you, it's a copy of the original Declaration of Independence, which was passed around to cities and towns in this, in the, in the colonies when, when independence was declared in 1776. The only way that, you know, no communication, other than people bringing documents, and, and that's a copy of the original that we acquired because of him. So, Jim, I don't know, I put that as an interruption, but anyway, thank you very much. I think maybe others want to say a word, Jim. There are no words, thank you.
My apologies to Kevin, I didn't see Kevin back there. Kevin is a former town council president, I don't know if Kevin had any words tonight, or.
I think Cal kind of covered it. Jim, it was great. I served with you for those four years, getting some of the bounce ideas off of, provide insight, guidance from the years that I hadn't been here and that history. So, thank you for your service to Exeter, and good luck in your future endeavors.
Sure.
Richard Kenyon here. Richard was a town council president for numerous years.
I think Cal probably said it all, but I think Cal deserves a lot of credit for bringing Jim to this town. In 94, I think it's the council's 94, I talked to Cal, Cal said, Jim is a good man. And I think it was unanimous that Jim, the acquaintance solicitor, and he's been invaluable ever since. And it was really a privilege and an honor to sit by tables with Jim. And he's done so much, I remember it, I think it was around the year 2000, a lot of things happened. We got a library, a playground, a tower, and this thing, this issue came up. And I think it was Brown University wanted the, and of course, I think it was originally issued to the Town of Exeter. Jim knew we wanted it, we said we wanted it. And Jim deserves 110% of the credit for the town securing that document.
He doesn't need it.
Totally deserves that.
I've got one other thing to add, I've worked with you for 12 years, and it's been enjoyable. Like I said, regrettable that you're leaving. And numerous times when we get on the phone and we're talking, a lot of times Lynn will end up going into, I love American history as much as this guy, and we end up going into Founding Fathers and stuff like that, so I got this book here for you, Jim. I bought a copy last year, and I'm still trying to digest it, and there you go.
Thank you so much.
That'll keep you busy when you're sitting on your sunroof.
Sure.
You'd have to put it in, yeah.
Too much.
Yeah. Anybody else have anything else to add, or? Would you like to speak, sir?
Believe it or not, I would like to say something. First of all, thank you all, this is beyond, I'm a bit speechless about how considerate these guests are, because they mean so much to me.
They mean a lot to us.
What I want to say, besides just thank you, is that it has been the honor of a lifetime to serve with the type of people that Exeter has the good fortune to grow in this town. Because I can say this, and I mean this sincerely, not only the people in this room, who I've had the privilege to, to, to serve with, but every single, every single town council person, every single employee that I can think of, all of you, do tremendous jobs. You do it, you're underpaid, you're underappreciated, you are kicked in the teeth sometimes for doing the right thing. And I can say this, there has never been, not only just this town council, but a single town council person that I can think of, no matter what their politics, no matter what their philosophy, no matter what their cause may have been, that did not have the best interests of the town in their heart. It led to political fights from time to time, or, or let's say, arguments from time to time, but never, ever have I doubted a single person's motivations and the purity of their, of their heart in putting into this town what you all have put into it, and what your predecessors have put into it. And I say that without equivocation. I've tried to stay in my lane, I've tried never to usurp the powers that council solicitors shouldn't have, that our charter doesn't grant, you all know that. How many times have I said that's a policy question, not a legal question, and I put it right back at you, sometimes worrying that that might be taken the wrong way, no one has ever taken that the wrong way? Because one way I've found is a good way to survive as a town solicitor, if that's what you want to do, is never to play politics, to always call it the way you see it, and hope that people understand that when Dan, as a Republican, leaves in the next election, and Cal or Olivia, as the Democrat, takes a seat as chair, which I've seen, oodles of times over the years, that you never, that the minority never thinks that Maruzak gave an opinion, or the firm ever gave an opinion that was based in politics, or based simply on the fact that the person's trying to keep their job. It's the last thing you want to do. The way you keep your job is by calling it like you see it, and if people don't appreciate that, then you don't want the job. And I've never said that I did not want this job, because it's been a pleasure. I tried to defend the town with all my heart, whenever, whenever the town needed defense, I apologized to you all and to the public for my failings, when they've occurred, I know they have. I know you're going to be in good hands with Ken and Steve Seiple, if you choose to stay with our firm. I hope you do. Finally, if I might, I'd like to offer, for the first time, a piece of personal advice to everyone. After 40, it's actually been 40 years as a council listener, 30 of them here. And this is this, and you all probably know this already, when, when things get hot and there's a contentious issue, and you're on opposite sides of one another, always try to take a second and try to place yourself in the other person's shoes. And if you can do that, you'll have, and, and, and try to walk a mile in their shoes, as the state goes, because if you can do that, you'll have a mile lead on them, and you'll have their shoes. So with that, I thank you all.
Thank you. I'm not sure we're walking miles, but we might walk like you.
Thank you, Dan, I appreciate it.
Good to see you, Dan.
Okay, number four, approval of the agenda order, does anybody have anything to add? Is there an approval of the agenda?
Oh, yes, see what?
All favor?
Aye.
Approval of the consent agenda, does anybody have any communication, Cal?
Yeah, I always have to start here, but yeah, I do, I do have a few, but just, but four, five, six, and 10.
Four, five, six, eight, seven, Olivia?
Yep, all set, thank you.
All set? Let's see, you have here the license renewals, are those two all set?
They're all set, yes.
Okay. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, vacancies and appointments, personnel board?
Nothing.
Nothing, if you need to post. Conservation position, we're one member away, but that passed, nothing yet?
Well, we have, we need one member before it would pass to five.
Oh, so now you have enough.
We should have.
Of course, you have six.
We have six.
You have six.
Now the question passed the election, we only need five.
Right.
Do you want to set correspondence?
Let's see if they still want to.
Yeah, I think that's what I would advise, and sometime after the first of the year, that maybe Ken can come in and draw, and move forward.
The third one's on here because Ray is serving on the tax board review, but he's, you know, resigned now that he's a council member.
Now we need to post that position.
Now we need a vote, we need a poll. Correct.
Yep. Do you want to post that?
Yep, please. Resignations, Ethan Judge, Judd, Animal Patrol Officer? Didn't work out?
It's conflicting with his school schedule.
Oh, okay.
He's still staying on as a floater.
Okay, so you still need to, so we need to post that position, I guess.
If we could, that'd be great. You have to come by.
All right.
Thank you.
That was, by the way, a very nice but short note that he wrote to us, explained how much he liked it, but wished he, because of his school challenge.
You got to put a motion out there to accept Ethan Judge's resignation?
It's done, though.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have a motion to post that?
Lynn, add regret. Well, I mean, he seems like he tried, did he, your grade?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Been around 10 years.
What?
He's been around a long time.
Regret, sure.
Yeah.
You mean as a poll?
Okay, next up, C, appointments, Exeter Rural Land Preservation Trust Committee members, two needed to serve four-year term, beginning date of appointment. Do they, do they even have a call?
We only have two people, two of us right now.
Number two, tax board review alternate member to serve three-year term, beginning date of appointment.
No.
Exeter West Clinton School District Capital Project Building Committee member.
This is on here because Mike was serving on the, they need a council member, so, anybody want to volunteer?
Diane, you volunteered for that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, Diane said she would step up and do that, so.
Motion.
Motion to appoint Diane out to serve on the Exeter West Clinton School District Capital Project Building Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number four, Public Works worker, that's you, Rob.
I'd like to, we, we got one application in, and it's a terrific guy. He's Karen Key, he's actively in Public Works now, and wants to come join the Exeter team. And I highly recommend this man that comes on us. He's very qualified, we're getting lucky somehow, it's unlucky.
It's, it's an impressive letter that he's written, with his qualifications.
High quality, yep. And he'll fit right in with the rest of the positive attitude, and I, I think he's a really good fit.
Move to appoint a higher, Mr. Silva.
All in favor?
Is there a second?
He's second.
Spiring terms, we have none. Number seven, public hearings, propose amendment to the Exeter Code ordinances and ordinance to authorize the appointment of one or more deputy zoning inspectors. Chapter two, administration, Article three, officers and employees, Division six, deputy zoning inspectors, section two sixteen, deputy zoning inspectors, motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do you want to give a short explanation there, Ken?
Sure. So, just to recap sort of where we are with the zoning inspector sort of situation, so as I'm sure you're all very aware, in, in August, Hal Morgan, the long-serving zoning inspector, was injured and incapacitated, and you voted to enact an emergency acting zoning inspector ordinance in September. That was then extended in October, so a total of 120 days from its initial enactment is how long that is going to run for, that happens to expire on the first of the year. This is the last meeting before that is scheduled to expire, and the two individuals that have been appointed to the acting zoning inspector position will be no longer empowered to do anything. So the, the core purpose of this is to stop that from happening until the zoning inspector role can ultimately be addressed in the future.
Any questions from members of the council?
No, I, I mean, today, it's, we need to, even, even when that position is eventually filled, one that Mr. Morgan would have had, it's, it's good to have someone that can step in if necessary. It's just, there are a lot of people at work here, that it's their one-man show, one-woman shows, and if, well, it's a good thing, so.
Comments or questions? I have three signed up from the public, the first is Katrina Thornley.
Do I stand?
Yeah, stand up and identify yourself with name and address, and leave the record, please.
I'm Katrina Thornley, 44, Bayes Schoolhouse Road. And I was just wondering what happens if someone else had been running? I know there were, there's another name on the list, so how does that play into this? I'm just curious.
Want to answer that, Ken?
I can, if you'd like me to.
Please.
So, basically, the short version is this, under the state constitution, the way all elections for municipal, all municipal elections work, is whoever gets the most votes is declared elected. Nobody else that ran, whether they're on the ballot, whether they're a write-in, if you didn't get the most votes, you didn't win. And that's sort of the end of it. There's no, there's no provision of state law or town charter or ordinance that gives any rights to anybody who did not win in an election. So ultimately, the council will have the authority to declare that position vacant under the charter and under state statute, and then appoint somebody to fill that vacancy for the remainder of the term.
Thank you.
Does that, does that go with the town, town council also?
So the town council is different, there's a charter provision that says, in, in the event of a vacancy on the town council, in that specific example, the unelected person with the most votes gets, has to be appointed essentially to the vacancy. So it's, it's, it's different for that particular position than it is for any other.
Thank you.
Number two for public comment is Tom McMillan.
Tom McMillan at 20 Cobblestone Hill Road. I simply want to make a brief comment, and I'm sure you're all very well aware of the importance of this position, particularly as more recent events have brought it to our attention. So important that you find a person with a great deal of knowledge on the subject and hopefully significant experience, so I simply encourage you to do what you already know and how important this job is. Thank you.
Thank you. Number three is Asa Davis.
Asa Davis, 146 Beechwood Hill Trail. This is map 681, which is the newest addition to the town's map library. The map was done by Rich Kouchon, who's a registered and licensed surveyor for about three decades, with Dowell Engineering, registered and licensed engineers for about the same time. The map shows my driveway from the state drive, also the driveway to my property, which was on my deed when I bought it, and is still on my deed today. That right of way was on the DeFrancesco deed when they bought their property, but is somehow no longer there. That right of way is why my mailbox is also at the end of the driveway with number 85A on it. This map.
65.
Can I please speak without being interrupted?
It's 65 on the mailbox.
This is in regards to zoning.
Yep, with the zoning inspector, and shortly, this is a public hearing.
Okay.
So that map also reflects with former DPW Matt Scheck's sworn court affidavit statement, but it agrees with the council meeting minutes dating back to 2009. I bring this up as background, because this town has an ongoing issue with zoning enforcement. Our previous zoning inspector was aware of these issues. He was aware of the illegal gun shop on Route Two, the DE on clean water violations at the town garage, the short frontage lots on the state drive and elsewhere. The new zoning map is supposed to be updated within 90 days of any changes, and it's been about 13 years since it was done. This is a new violation. Woodworking shops are prohibited in residential zones like on Ballville Road for good reason. They have dangerous inflammable finishes, solvents, and catalysts that ignite easily and are hard to put out. That might have made the DeFrancesco fire more dangerous, but that's not what started it. It wasn't his wood burning lasers or his welding equipment either. According to the publicly available incident report, the fire was started by someone putting wood stove coals in dry brush. I bring this up because that shop is prohibited by lines 25 and 29 of our zoning table. There is no exception because someone is on or chair of the planning board, or because his daughter is on the town council. As a side note, we never did find out where the PFAS came from at the last quarter from the big brush fire. That stuff is getting phased out of firefighting home gradually, and I don't think it's used in Exeter anymore, but I can't say the same for other departments. I understand six total responded to that fire. With a burning structure, SOP would call for foam. Congestion wouldn't have much effect on someone my age or older, but if I was a hypochondriac or if I had a young kid that lived there, I'd start getting the water tested regularly. I understand the public GoFundMe appeal to cover the lost inventory and reconstruction costs is doing well, has almost raised as much as the response cost. I hope before rebuilding starts, the zoning inspector takes a look at whether use is permitted. I believe our building inspector is going to be conflicted in this case. I'd like to see the zoning position converted to an appointed position, so you can enforce some qualifications for the job. I know this would take a charter change, so it's not as easy as kicking the can down the road, but whatever happens, I hope the zoning inspectors start applying and enforcing the zoning code on everyone as it is written. Thank you.
Is there any other comment from the public? Comment or questions from the council members?
Yeah, one thing that I want to mention real quick, the version of the ordinance that was put out on the table today is slightly different than the one that would have been sent a week ago, not in substance, just in form, so nobody's wondering why there's any changes, just to make it line up better for purposes of, if it's codified, what section we are, same words.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Done.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the proposed amendment to the Exeter Code ordinances and ordinance. ordinance to authorize the appointment of one or more deputy zoning inspectors under chapter two administration, Article three officers and employees, Division six deputy zoning inspectors, section two sixteen deputy zoning inspectors.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight is public comment. I hope I'm pronouncing this right. Is it Grace Gobin?
Yes, it's Gobin. Okay. I think that this may actually be somewhat related to the topic that you were all, we're just discussing, but I apologize if this, it is, but I just am not aware. So, my name is Grace, and my husband and my son and I live at forty-one Dolly Pond Road, and renew our residence to Exeter and renew to our neighborhood. We're both from Rhode Island, but it took us a while to find a house, and we're very happy to move to Exeter, but since we moved in, we found that our neighbors, very close to our property line, really enjoy having their kids ride dirt bikes and ATVs routinely. And it's not just occasionally, sometimes it's upwards of five to six hours a day, and it's, the sound just comes right into our house. It's very loud. It's disturbing, and sometimes there's upwards of like six vehicles going at once. And I think we were working with Hal this summer to try to get like a decibel reading. We're just looking for some guidance or some way for the town to be able to enforce the noise ordinance that we were able to find when we looked at the town's website. It's incredibly loud. It's louder than you would imagine, and I, I can't, you know, tell you what it's like to go to bed at night and still hear ATVs and motorcycles and stuff like that going in my head. It's not just like somebody running a leaf blower, you know, this is different than just somebody playing music at a party. This is like, you know, and I don't have a problem with kids playing. Our other neighbors have kids that play, and they play baseball, and they ride bikes, and they laugh, and they play, and they, nothing makes me happier as a parent than hearing a kid laughing and having fun. I just know that there's ways for kids to be entertained that doesn't, you know, necessarily involve that much noise, and I respect people's rights to do what they want on their property. It's private property, they're not, you know, they don't usually go into the street, they're pretty respectful about that, they're not coming into our yard, they're not messing with us. It's just that you can't keep sound just on your property, and that's why there's noise ordinances, and that's why there's state laws about it. But when, we've had two conversations with them and basically been told in the last conversation that nobody cares, that the town of Exeter won't do anything to stop them, that Hal Morgan wasn't going to do anything to stop them, and that there was nothing that could be done to stop them from making this noise, and that there was no noise ordinance, and that as long as they didn't make any noise between like ten P M. and seven A M., that they could do whatever they wanted. And that's hard to hear because it affects our lives. You know, we're here on a Monday night, got a full-time job with a two-year-old, and it's Christmas time. It's really important to me that the town finds a way for whoever is responsible for taking the decibel reading, that that's, that's a job that's given to somebody.
I gotta stop you there, there's a three-minute time limit.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
But if you could leave your phone number with the link for me.
Sure, absolutely.
Your husband's more than welcome to speak, it's like a three-minute time limit.
I understand, I read it. You might add more, because I'm a little nervous, but.
My name is Greg, Sergeant Miller. We've talked a number of times, thank you for all your time, we've talked, we've been on the phone. As I said, we started working with Hal on this back in the spring. Really, really kind of struck a chord the first time on like Easter morning, you know, we were out collecting eggs the first time, and a number of ATVs and dirt bikes started up, and we're talking fifty feet from our property line and a hundred feet from our front door, and it's really, really loud. So, I started working with Hal then, I talked to a number of people through the Exeter town offices, first the state police, they said there's nothing they could do, really, and Sergeant Miller and then Karen Ellsworth, who's one of the current acting zoning inspectors, she, they both told me to come to town council meeting and to just let our concerns be known.
Next is Asa Davis.
I'll pass. Awesome, thank you.
Ken, can I add something to that? I know my name wasn't on the list. I'll just take one minute, Mary Beth Conoyer. These people are my neighbors, they have not in the least exaggerated the loudness of the people, the ATVs, the dirt, the energy, you know, it's fine for somebody to have fun for an hour or two, but it will go on all day, so they are new, but in my estimation, they've not over-exaggerated it, and I think that it impacts more than just one household. So, you know, looking for neighbors to work together, and if we could look at some parameters that make it livable for all in the neighborhood, that would be super. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Number nine. New business reconsideration request of town staff to close town offices and departments on Monday, December twenty-third. So, you can sit there and just keep your mouth shut.
Oh, you should do that. Do a little break.
If I were you, I'd walk away.
Now, you want to do that back there?
I did.
How would you speak to it?
Of course. This is an item that I asked Lynn to place there, and asking for some reconsideration, and that's based on conversations I've had with Lynn, I don't know whether anyone else has, but in terms of the future, going forward toward the holiday, I, and I'm reminded of the fact that we did have the, I don't think we spoke of that, but there was a communication through us dated October eleventh, and it's, well, I didn't count the numbers, but three, six, seven, eight, nine, about ten people signed this, asking us to consider closing on December twenty-third, and interacting with Lynn. She indicates a number of people, people will be traveling or other, they would like to just, they're going to be taking vacation days. I don't think the people are going to be here. I think we should just, I think we should just give these folks a little morale boost. As, and I voted for this, as you know, last time. I know that you didn't, but I just would like it to be reconsidered, so. I, I, yeah, and I, before I, well, I make the motion to reconsider that we honor the request of the staff that the building be closed on December twenty-third. If there's a second to discussion.
Second.
Thank you. I would wonder if, Lynn, would you say a word for us? For the record, let me verify what I, I've just told the council, what you basically shared with me.
Yeah, so, a number of the staff are either taking vacation or sick days, like it's been said, you know, we are unpaid, you know, do a lot for what, we do a lot for what you get, and it would just be a great morale booster, and very much appreciated if we could just have one day off, I mean, it's one day, and it just would be great, you know, morale, we need some morale.
Lynn, thanks. I, we, we spoke to Rob too at that meeting, and Rob, if I recall, you indicated that your, some of your crew might, you know, it's a most situation, and might be using personal days, and I guess my question to you would be, can you afford that day? I mean, if, you know what I mean? Can you work it scheduled so that you can have a few days? Of course, emergencies are another story. So, we don't want any snow on those days just before, because if we do, somebody's going to help.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think we know that. We do know that. So, Rob, thank you. I just, so that's my motion, I believe it was seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, I think the staff thanks you for that.
Okay. Item B.
For the sake of the public, I've accused myself of sat in the crowd, I talked to the , at this commission today, my wife's a full-time employee, just so you guys know, it's a learning process.
Okay. Item B, Department of Public Works requesting lot to bid stationary fuel tank.
Yes, right now DPW has, we're getting away from the diesel, the one-ton trucks just have nothing but problems, and it's not just us, it's everybody. So, now we have two gasoline vehicles, and we have two more coming, so it's time to get fuel onsite, I believe. They make these portable cells that are out there, all one unit, encased hose, it's got a containment thing, I guess. So, it's, you know, the ones that I've seen, it's called a fuel cube, can hold up to, you know, they go up to eighteen, two thousand gallons, but I'm looking for a thousand gallon, probably get it filled once or maybe every month, month to six weeks, have fuel, gasoline onsite.
Would he have like a dike for it?
No, it's all, it's all, it's a box within a box, and it's-
With a bottom ground box thing?
It is, and you know, you hook the electric, you know, have the electrician, we have a spot for it right next to our diesel, it'll all be in what I'm calling a fuel island. So, it's, you know, it's, you know, the one for the diesel is this big concrete monstrosity that they used to need. This particular unit is like something you could pick up with a forklift and bring it on a job site, from place to place to place, and still be compliant, you know, very safe. Hook the electricity to it and fill your trucks.
Other, other departments around, you know, Public Works departments.
West Greenwich.
You know the question I was going to ask. West Greenwich has a similar?
I'm not sure what West Greenwich has, I just know what our department needs.
Okay. Oh, sure. I didn't know, I'm thinking about the experience that others may have.
Fuel thing, the nearest thing is obviously during business hours is right there at the Veteran Cemetery. If not during a storm event, I gotta run down to Belleville or down to Richmond, you know.
In order to fill the truck.
Before, it was no problem because they were diesel, and we have the diesel for the bigger units, but seeing with all the, you know, emissions issues that happen with all big trucks and low trucks, we're getting away from the diesel, and so that's why we have more gas units coming, and so I just want an in-house fuel situation. I think it'd be best to streamline all my-
And you do have a place for-
We have a preference spot for it.
I'll make a motion to allow to bid for a stationary fuel tank for the Department of Public Works.
Sir, Ken.
All in favor? Item C, Department of Public Works, and we would bid penetrating surface treatment and asphalt pavement utilizing malteens replacement technologies, MRT. This is under capital improvements too, right?
I'm sorry?
This is under your capital improvement program.
Absolutely, yep.
So, this is for the next season?
Yep, yes. Well, the particular product that I'm shooting for is the MRT, which is, it's a penetrating oil, and it's rejuvenator, and it's absolutely part of my pavement preservation program. It's proven. It's saving roads. You want to take care of your best roads first, and so this is a very economical way to maintain roads for longevity. So, and, you know, there was only one bid, because I believe there's only one company that does it. Unfortunately, I don't know what to say about that, and someone that we've used for years, their service is flawless.
This is the treatment where you put the sands out too, correct?
Yeah, we dust this with sand, just for, you know, while it's flashing, you let it flash, and then you dust it with sand, so you got a little bit of traction, if you will, but main thing it does is it penetrates, it goes right through that asphalt and just keeps working and working and working, and it binds it all back together with all the malteens, and I'm not a scientist, but these people are, and I've seen the product work. It's a phenomenal product.
It's amazing.
It is.
It's gone a long way, huh?
Yeah. Part of the reason, if I may add, it's part of the reason why the town just scored just about an eighty percent on our overall roads. This is the program that we've been running since I've been here. I'm in my fifth year, my predecessor believed in this stuff, taught me about it, I've been at seminars, I've been all over with other communities, and this is the way to save your roads. It may be messy, but it's, it's so much more economical, it's the smarter way to do things these days instead of just paving it. You need to take care of the base, this is taking care of the base, these products take care of the base, and then we, then we can figure out what we want to do with the surface. So, it's not going to improve any rideability whatsoever, it's not going to, it's going to make it more durable.
So, no more chip seal?
Oh, chip seal's part of that program that I believe in, yeah, absolutely. This is the first of, you know, depending on where we have a road, if it's really depleted and cracked, and, you know, instead of having all those little cracks, this blankets it and gets all those little hail on cracks that you can hardly see, or you do see where the water gets down below, and when it freezes, pops, now we've got potholes. So, this is the first step that you would do before you, you do that underneath the chip seal, and that keeps working. It's amazing.
So, it keeps the work, it's ongoing.
Absolutely. The more you drive on it, the more it just mashes those small cracks together.
Yeah, before you go on, I just, I'd just acknowledge a piece, young man we're here observing, and so, good to have you. There's more to it, but after all, you gotta get your homework done, so.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to allow Department of Public Works to, oh, you need awarding a bid, I'm sorry. Motion to award the bid, and who is it, Martino Company?
Marino.
Marino. For the upcoming paving season. All in favor? Item D, Department of Public Works, awarding a bid for wood chipper.
Yes, so, where this arrived, we, we, we're going to need one, we don't need one at this very moment, we have a running working unit, it's out, I believe it's a two thousand and ten, I, I, believe me, I should know that, but I don't, I have so many pieces, I don't know exactly the year of it. It's, it's no longer being made, so we have an older one, it's having electrical issues, it will still work, but with the amount of woodworking that I have on my plate, we're not going to want to be without one. I realize that the stream of money or the bucket, if you will, is changed. However, there is other streams, so I probably can't buy it right now.
They're six months out, two would say?
Yeah. So, and, you know, maybe they put it on the next budget, however, the pots are going to become hotter and hotter they get for the woodsmen that we have, and now when you're starting to talk electrical, which is where it's at, it's in the panel that makes it go faster and slower, it's not mechanical, it's in the electrical, so that's what's going on with our unit right now, so.
I got a question. How many horsepower is the new one? Is it above seventy-four?
Above seventy-four?
Is it seventy-five, tier four emissions kicking in completely with jack, we're back in the same.
Oh, no, no, this is gasoline.
Oh, it's gas?
Oh, absolutely, I'm not messing with it anymore. Yeah, definitely not doing a chipper, no way. It's gasoline. It's a six-point-oh Ford engine, I believe, which is proven to me.
I, when I saw it on YouJenner, I looked it up online, that little video.
Yeah.
It's got a lot of safety features to it.
Oh, it's got a lot of-
Everything is like, you've dug the fuel tank, everything is right there.
Yep.
I mean, the floor panel and everything, so.
They make them real nice and efficient these days, this is centrifugal clutch, we can change the clutch in our shop, it's not some big thing where you gotta lift the motor up. They really make them- They really make them, um, the bigger tree companies, this is what they're using. That's the one that came in, um, so, you know, if and when we can find the source of money, um, which I believe, you know, they're holding, you know, six months to get it anyway, so.
How, how, how old's the other one?
Forgive me for not knowing that answer.
Before you?
Oh, definitely before me. I wanna say it's either a ten or below, two thousand and ten or below.
Yeah.
Was I know it's, they're not making that unit no more. So pots are gonna become rare. It's fully functional right now. I can make it work, but you gotta mess with it to get it to fire up.
I'm knocking on.
One of these days, it's not gonna fire up for us. It runs, it's a cat engine, it's a beautiful little engine, but it's, the problem is, it's, it's, and it's pre-DEF and all that, so it's good like that. So it's not having those issues. But, um, the computer, the motherboard is where, you know.
The circuit board.
The circuit board, that's where it runs it. The safety features. So in other words, and that's another thing too, is it's not shutting off where it should be when we're still using it at this time. So in other words, it's supposed to stop and stop. We're making this thing work because I have work for it. Just safety wise, you know.
Dan, I, you know, with a hundred miles of road, more or less, and maybe half of them have trees that need to be attended to pretty often, he needs something. Can we, a question of awarding a bid and then purchasing when someone releases money? You know, over there. But can we award it and hold the purchase?
That's what I was gonna do because they're, they're six months out anyway, which is gonna put you almost into June.
Sure. Go.
So you mean like order it now?
No.
Is that what you're saying?
Wait till you have the source of money and then just keep this bid, because we already went through the process, keep this one open and when we do find the money, just purchase.
So you have the money, you order it?
Right.
You wait until.
I mean, if that, that's, sounds good to me if that works for council.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to allow Department of Public, uh, award the bid for a new wood chipper pursuant to funding being available.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, item E, request to reduce speed limit, Schoolland Woods Road.
Yeah, that's probably me again. Um, so we just recently, uh, which is gonna come up later, that we, we made a repair on Mill Road. And so I'm driving through my detour and I realized there was no speed limit sign. So I, I put up some twenty-five mile an hour speed limit signs so I wouldn't have people doing fifty through there.
They still do fifty.
Right, and they will. They, they'll ignore it, but at least I'm acknowledging it, telling, you know, trying to. So it's come up, got a couple complaints from residents that it's too fast. And I, and I kinda agree with that. So, uh, I guess.
It's still a dirt road, right?
It's gravel and it's about eighteen feet wide, seventeen in some areas, and it could be a fifteen in a corner, but so, it's very.
Kid coming the other way and pickup truck sideways.
Yeah, and they like fishtailing and donuts and everything else on the road, so.
I told Rob that we received quite a few complaints the day of the closing and detouring him through Schoolland Woods, a lot of the people that lived on the road where I was at one end and complained about.
But from my understanding, and, um, council over here reassured me that any road that is not even posted is automatically twenty-five miles an hour.
Yeah, it, right. So unless it's within three hundred feet of a school, then it's down to twenty automatically. Um, and subject to certain, certain conditions that probably don't apply to a gravel road.
Okay. So, um, my suggestion to answer to the, to the residents is to bring it down to twenty. Uh, I don't think it's a fifteen mile an hour road. Um, it's, it's, rideability's really good. It is, it's not that narrow. Um, I think twenty, and I have no real professional opinion why, I didn't do a study. But I'm thinking fifteen would be the next option, would be too slow. But I'm open to suggestions from council, however, to, you know, accommodate the residents.
So is Boom Lake, is that, Johnny?
That's fifteen.
Boom Lake?
Fifteen?
We, we gotta dive down to fifteen.
Fifteen.
Yeah. Now, you got kids walking, and you probably do on, on Schoolland Woods, there's a park and everything else. But I'd have to say that, you know, west shore and east shore are probably narrower. And you got cars parking on both sides, cause that's the way the living is though, they don't have a lot of driveway space. So you got a lot of obstacles and kids and bikes and walking dogs like, like throughout the year, anytime you ride through, there's some walking a dog.
Yeah. There's quite, there's quite a few more residents within east shore, west shore, drive the Boom Lake area. And the houses are so much closer to the road, so you do have.
I mean, I'm open to total suggestions on the limit. I mean, I figured twenty-five, but, you know, driving it to twenty-five, you got two cars on the way, it's a little narrow.
I, I'd suggest listening to Rob with the lowering of twenty, but I'm also wondering if there isn't some other, uh, maybe some signage that can be put up that says, uh, hidden driveway, something that, something that cautions people that this is not.
I, I believe one residence did have a complaint that I put it too close to the driver. Obviously we'll adjust that accordingly.
You put what, the speed limit?
Yeah, it's probably too close to the driver. I, I didn't realize that. So, uh, again, it was just before the detour opened up, I just wanted to have some sort of something to keep him within reason to slow down. So they're not like, you know, tearing through there like maniacs, which they do, so.
Well, right. And especially people who wouldn't be familiar with the road because it's not often used, maybe. But I just wonder if there aren't some other cautionary things that might make people realize that this is not just a little country road, but there are hidden driveways or something that would bring people, you know.
Like there are walkers.
You know, something or.
Speed camera head.
I mean, I don't know what's.
Check by radar.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I'm wide open to that and I can look into.
There might be some other.
Some more specialty signs that.
Something like that.
You know, it is a country road. I don't wanna take it and make it look like a city road with all these signs either. I'm just saying, just want.
But if it's, you know, if there's.
If there's a blind driveway, um, there's probably already a sign there for it. If I would, you know, if a resident requests that, def, try whatever, then we, we put it out there for sure.
If it's a public issue.
Right. So.
I'll make a motion to grant DPW directors' request to reduce the speed limit on Schoolland Woods Road to twenty miles an hour. Any additional signage needs.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item F, hay contract, request of current holder of re- remaining two years of contract.
So you have your, the letter from the person that contracted for three years. Um, I guess it's not worthwhile to her. She's a tree field woman, I guess she expected to. So she's asking if the contract could be broken. She could be, um, left loose from the last.
Well, they don't have any money anyway, so what's your opinion about this?
Well, having not reviewed the contracts, I don't know what the terms of it are, but if the terms are particularly favorable to the town.
Well, speaking from experience and Patty can back me up, there was a total collapse in the hay market for the last year. That's why they wanna get rid of it. I think if you put it out the bid, you might get somebody, I doubt it.
In contact with the person that was so upset.
Yeah, I would put it out the bid again and just send it right to them. They, they had a lot of cattle, the other people, so this guy.
Should probably make a motion to, you know, um, release them from, you know, the next two years and then make a motion to post.
So we assume, can I, we, I assume they're no longer cutting the, the hay on the town farm? Is it?
They did, they only did one cutting this year, they never went back and did the second cutting.
Okay, so obviously they, and if they're not cutting, they don't wanna give us any money for what they're not doing, right?
In the last year, two or three, yeah.
Or am I missing? Am I missing something?
They paid the first year of the contract that they haven't taken next year.
But if they're not, well.
They've only done one year, so.
If they're not cutting, they, I can understand why they don't wanna bring us any money, cause they, and, and we need to have, you know, if it's town field, it should, it should be cut. I mean, it shouldn't, you don't let it go. So maybe this was asking too much. I mean, it was a bid process, as I remember, so this is what they offered. But maybe if we let it go and then repost and see if somebody else, it should be cut.
So.
City guy here. City, hey, guilty, guilty. City guy, so I don't have the letter from, I read the levels, the reason why it wasn't maintained or.
Which I disagree with, because the previous people in there maintained it.
Should do for the lives of people. Make it grow. Yeah.
It'd be done.
Gotta be done.
Those are just wild grass. I mean, you don't, you don't add rootless, uh, it's just a little wild.
It says rhine and.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I don't know about that, but I assume you have to do something, just like if you wanted a nice.
That's how much fertilizer costs to do that field.
Yeah.
A most precious one, not a lot, but something.
Yeah. It's like not blowing your lawn, if you like.
Yeah. Please take over.
I, I'll, I'll make a motion, oh wait, can I have something to say?
As you say, you can amend the contract and go back to them and negotiate the courts. They were the only builders for the project.
They were.
I would just resend the contract and put it right back out the bid because there was one individual that was, what did they, they missed the bid date or?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, they missed that, the notice for the, um.
So there is someone else that might, but my point is hay needs to be cut.
Yeah.
I had somebody ask me the other day if I knew anybody who would cut and then take it away. Not a huge amount, but I thought, gee, I don't know, my people find somebody free hay, they just want their property cut. Anyway.
Okay. I'll make a motion to resend the contract.
Yours, what, yours too?
Patrick McNiff for year two, which goes from December one, two thousand and twenty-four to November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. And year three, which runs from December first, two thousand and twenty-five to November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now I'll make a motion.
Do you say yes?
Yeah, I did, I just was just, yeah, go ahead, we gotta do.
Now I'm gonna make a motion to post this, post the hay in the town farm for a three year contract.
Wait, this is, is this over at Long Road? No, where is this?
Right across from DPW.
Correct, well, that's what I thought. I wanna make sure, what we're talking about. But, okay, just under discussion, I, I think Lynn, Lynn will obviously notify the, that they're not this. But I think she should also say, we're reposting and then if they feel like they really wanna, they can try again. You, you would do that, you know, but would you, don't you think that's okay, to let them know that we're reposting?
They missed the last one, they were upset when they.
Yeah, but I'm talking about.
They were an hour short.
No, I'm talking about these people that we just freed from the contract. Let them know it's being reposted. And they could try again, only, you know, blow up. And let the other person that wanted it, let them know it's being posted again. That's my thought on this.
Do I have a motion in the second?
Yeah, but I think.
All in favor? Uh, item G, awarding a request for proposals, Town Hall Architectural Services, Ken?
We, we want them and, um, we still have work to do on them. More involved.
Do you wanna continue that to next one? I gotta continue G until next month.
Did you see on the review's email?
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe, wait, excuse me, I know what you're asking. Maybe we should address it when we get to seven forty-two, build it down. I mean, I'm thinking that might be a place, we're talking about the money expenses, but maybe, what do you think, you know, I mean, Lynn?
Unfinished business January.
Yeah.
For that one?
Okay. Consideration possible appointment of current acting zoning inspectors as deputy zoning inspectors if that position is established.
It has been established.
Yes, so.
So I'm moved that we, that we employ higher, whatever appropriate word would be, those two individuals to continue as deputy in a deputy position.
Karen Ellsworth and Joshua Chase. Does anybody have a second? A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Exeter Clerk's Office awarding a bid, basement water mitigation. This is unfinished business. Myself, Rob and Bill Brown met with this company and went through it and we spent about two hours in the dungeon. All my, all my questions are satisfied, but were answered unsatisfied.
My, my work too, it was actually, it seems like a good system for this fit, I mean.
The only issue is, I mean, you're a manhauer and what's gotta be moved in that basement.
Right. So what you mean is like, right now would not be a good time for DPW to commit to get down there and, you know, Wednesday night could turn into something.
You might even need that rent a pod.
I'm thinking that.
Especially on that one wall with all the wooden shelving that must've come down, so.
Once you, uh, wanna move forward, like, we can add our convenience, start taking like that, some of them structures down. We can go over what we discussed.
The board of canvassers things that have to be under lock and key and supervise, supervision or however it is important, like, would those be allowed to be in a pod?
Well.
Like, or in their own.
That, that section wasn't in the way.
It's in the middle.
Okay.
They're going around the, the entire, you know.
So that might be able to.
Yeah, we'll make sure and that stays on the lock, so we don't have to worry about that. It's the other side.
The basement where it's really on, we're, we're.
To Olivia's point, those should be in a pod by themselves.
Oh, I see you with the workers there.
They have to be.
All right, I didn't think of that at that time.
Those particular files, they have the election records, they need to be under.
I know that, um, is it Nancy?
Nancy Mary.
Right, um, she mentioned that there's a lot of waste that she wants Public Works to get rid of. So maybe that will cut it down to, um, to make it more, less of a space. I, I don't know.
Just a consideration of pods and moving stuff.
We'll find somewhere to lock them up or in a pod, or a section of pod or something.
Yeah, but we were in the middle room, they weren't away there.
The new building?
Yeah.
We'll lock them there by themselves.
So what, what is?
Workers in there, we can.
What is the scope of work that's gonna be done?
Well, it's gonna be noisy for a day or two. They're gonna cut and chisel out by hand and then remove about this, what, about this wide and about this deep concrete. And then they put a system that anything that would leak would go into this trough and it's got dehumidifier and everything, all included. Anything that would, it's an old building down there, so you got.
I've been down there.
You've got, you know, and then, you know, so it's not stopping really any leaks. It's main, it's, it's, um, maintaining what does.
Yeah, it's controlling.
It's controlling it.
Yeah, okay. Is the state police door, does it go down there? Is the state police door still down there? No?
I've got all the papers, I took it out to back it, right?
It's a really good system for what this building is. You know what I mean, I mean.
It's long overdue, what's it called? Long overdue.
Yeah, she did a lot of work.
It's a, it, it's a lot of handwork.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of work, you know, the ground, no.
Right, then they, then they, you know, five gallon bucket, the stuff out and five gallon bucket, this, the rocks and the stuff to build the trough. And it's a whole system that's all patented. It, it, it's, it's a good system.
Maybe they'll, um, do the noisy work on a weekend.
Um, not sure of that.
That was what they did.
That's the. That's good.
What did you say?
December twenty-third.
Well, I thought that too, but I wouldn't have said.
Alright, so.
They claim they can cut it and jackhammer it one day, I kind of.
It's a lot, though, I think.
Doubt that, I think they're gonna be done electrically.
It's like combined, combined, combined space.
And, and the thing is, it's not, they're using electric hammers and stuff like that, but it's gonna be loud. I mean, there's no doubt about it. So all that has to be in consideration when we nail down a, 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 a date on it. And, you know, and then you can discuss, there's a deposit and then they'll put in any date you want, you know.
Well, we can always do email, phone calls, put signage on walls, on the doors, you know, all these numbers if you look at the so-and-so. And if, we would have to make appointments to come in if we have to do it in those three days or something. Maybe we can do all that, you know, we want. You know, somebody need their marriage license or.
Work from home, so like my, this COVID. Yeah. I couldn't have done it, it was closed for COVID. Yeah, I did stuff for.
Do you have a name for that company?
Dry zones?
Yeah, dry zones.
Right. I'll make a motion to award dry zone basement waterproofing, what is the amount?
Two hundred and forty thousand two hundred and fifty.
How much was the thing?
Forty thousand two hundred and two dollars.
Forty, it's some forty thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Two hundred and two.
Three sixty?
Yeah.
Forty thousand, two hundred and two dollars and fifty cents to dry zone basement system to bring water back.
And that was made in second, motion made in second.
You have to award the.
So you didn't speak about the one issue that I know you two gentlemen spoke about before. When we discussed this, that if there was any damage, they won't be responsible, did that?
Yeah, they addressed that.
Did that get clarified a little bit?
With these older buildings, you don't know where somebody could have put a pipe or a wire that's going outside to another building that they might have had. It's very slim chance.
Right.
But there's always that possibility.
You must have asked that question.
Oh, yeah.
They must have made you, put you at ease a bit.
Yes.
Good.
And ledge, Annie brought up, you know, and, and alleged, they probably just.
You just go on the ledge a little bit, yes. We have to make those accommodations around here. Lots of rocks.
And what was it, everything was warranted for God knows how the pump systems are. They've patented their own pump.
Oh, it's, it's a good system. It's really good. If you have the problem like this building has, it, it will answer the, the problem.
Each one of them has two pumps and then there's a third pump. I mean, if you have no power, the third pump is designed to run battery. Back of battery power, there's two of those going in there.
And they, they.
They brought all sorts of samples, it's.
Well, and, and I remember that that, uh, uh, bid included, uh, heavy duty, I call it heavy duty, uh, some pumps, like. Better than what's probably been there, more efficient.
And part of the system, each one has its own dehumidifying system, like inline and it drains with the same ways that, you know. It, it's a good system, it really is.
And you've probably all seen the ads for, um, they're on TV.
Well, this, this, this isn't the one you see on TV, this is a different company.
What do you think, Lynn?
Yeah, it is.
Is it the same one on TV?
Yeah. Cal's seen it on TV.
So you see, when you see the ad, you could say, this is how we're fixing the town hall. It is the same, correct?
Yes, it is. They have commercials, put it that way, you, you can call somebody else, but.
I think it was somebody else.
This company has commercials.
I got that number up, I said, Lynn, why don't you call these people, see if they're, if they're interested.
And I did, and I.
And then, then lo and behold, I called and they're coming.
Thank you.
Well, just because you will see the ad, I, I, so, no, I mean, no, good, well, then you wouldn't say that, but.
Okay, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for moving that forward.
Yes, thank you.
Lynn's guy wearing boots and one of the rest of the gear, but yeah.
Yeah, I don't want you to know that either.
Okay. Item B, solid waste and recycling services agreement between Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation and the municipality.
These people are not getting back to me at all.
Really?
I'm telling you.
Still?
No.
That was the one with the vague wording, right?
It was. It was, uh, you know, um, with the, the amount of money, it was to be determined to like. And it, yeah, I got one phone number that's linked to that email package and the lady is not answering me back.
Maybe if we quit paying the bill, we're in. Then maybe then they'll call us.
So I got, you know, emails.
This was starting what June first of next year though, correct?
Yes.
Do I remember right?
Yeah, it's.
I'm questioning, I thought we just signed it, why did we have it so early at least? That's why I didn't really.
You gotta sign anything that has a blank spot.
Right. I mean, short of getting in my truck and going there, I don't know who else to call. It's the number that's linked to it, the email that's linked to this lady's desk and she's not responding.
Can I, can I suggest that we ask the clerk to write to this place and tell this person that the council can't move forward until some issues are clarified? And respond to our DPW director and just in writing, let somebody know that, so you don't have to keep making calls, but. Would that, I would, I would make that motion for consideration if that's a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, C, status, welcome to Simon's Gym and Hotel.
Well, one thing, it's not a problem for anything inside, guy.
Haven't heard nothing yet.
Nothing to do there, Ken?
Nope.
Okay. Item D, Director of Public Works, damaged town property, mail road. I make a motion to recoup that. That is good fix.
Second.
Fix, yeah, they did it the way you wanted to do it.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Great job.
But it's alright, it's alright.
Thanks for doing that.
Steamwork.
It is good, though.
It's a good job.
Oh, yes. You can pay our details.
Yeah, things went smooth.
Yep.
E, status, Rhode Island two fifty commission, Exeter Historic Preservation Commission.
Katrina was here, she loved it.
Yeah, she loved, there, I mean, there are things happening. I know they're doing a raffle, I, I don't know all the details, um, but they're, they're trying to prepare for kickoff.
Thursday, Thursday night, uh, Sheila said she would have raffle tickets over there in the hall suite.
Yeah, so Esteban and Katrina were here today, upstairs.
Yeah.
Going through.
They were, they removed, um, you know, they're not postal boy, they're, what do you call us? The mounting frames, things that have articles on them that, I'll tell you what's been suggested, just for, to think about this. That, uh, they're being an open house in the spring up there with these displays. Uh, and a two hundred and fifty of people kickoff there. These are the things we're gonna do, these are, this is what I, I, I've just been listening to what they propose, but. Uh, let people who want to come see what we bought and then understand why it's not turning key. So people, you know, go in and Lynn can be there and, you know, what people can, can, can be, they, it just, this is what we have, but we need to do things, by the way. You know, just an open house, not for people who wander off of the building, but just seeing it. So that's just something that they may want you to approve at some point going forward. I did speak to Lynn about it, she thought it could work. Uh, I'll think about it.
I didn't have town government buildings uses and improvement plans. One, six seventy-five, ten yard road, basement water mitigation, we solved that issue.
So, yeah, you want me to remove it and you want me to keep six seventy-five on?
Just keep six seventy-five on there.
You can give us updates too about how like, what it's gonna.
We're looking at the end of March before we can get down with your work.
Yeah, okay, well.
Uh, seven forty-two, ten yard road status, anything new, Ken?
I've been checking the building weekly, um, sometimes twice a week to make sure the thermostats are on or, I mean, the furnace was serviced. We found the right company to do it. And then the thermostats all work now, we figured that one out, so the temperature's sixty-one degrees inside the building, maintaining.
Isn't there one avenue that had access to some of the panels?
It was the snow wifi service, so the, the four thermostats are all wifi controlled. So everybody that had access to the thermostats could only do it from their phones. The system was all hooked up, it had to be manually done, nobody knew the code, so. So I think the YouTube, we figured out the code, the thermostats were only seven or sixty-one.
Now you're doing it manually.
Huh?
Now you're doing it manually.
Yeah. They're working, it's working good.
Okay, that, well, there was a, I saw, I came across a, uh, Susan Foxley note about fire checking the fires. Some, some remember that? This was some time ago, but.
Well, we just had a recent inspection last month.
You did?
The fire extinguisher was updated.
That's probably what she was talking about.
It was down to the old, old.
No, it is. And I just want to make sure that that got done.
All on, just me.
That got done. So the issue also, I think there's some money that we need to address, ARPA money. We got, we got, uh, a summary today from Maria about what we have left. And, um, and so one of the issues is whether or not that she needs to deal with that. We need to deal with that before the end of the.
I sent her back an email and said, earmark it towards that building.
Look, that's not your decision.
Yeah, yeah.
That's your recommendation.
My recommendation, yeah.
But you told.
Four block, good, yeah, yeah.
So your recommendation is that we take that money and put it into the account that will be used to make the improve, in the improvements. And you need to, everyone needs to know that.
So that's the thing we have to spend in within two years, once you, once you establish that.
Once it's encumbered, you have another two years.
Didn't we have a New Town Hall fund and budget one time? Was there anything in that that you're still doing?
There's money there.
There's still money in it.
That's where this will essentially go.
So if you encumber the rest of the ARPA money to the New Town, seven forty-two, New Town Hall Fund, um, then it will stay where it is, but it's, it's obligated. It's considered obligated.
Yeah.
And if that's how you wish to spend, um, you know, I can, I can start the paperwork and it would have to be reviewed. Um, other towns are doing it, they're encumbering, one department is encumbering another department. So the general fund would be encumbering the New Town Hall Fund, if that's how you want to do it.
So it's not established yet as a new town hall.
It absolutely is because that's what the resolution at the, um, financial town meeting that allowed us to purchase that building. So that building is a new town hall period, end of story, correct? Yeah.
Correct from Ken?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, just wondering.
Do we need a motion?
Need a motion?
Sure, I'll, 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 I'll move that we direct Maria to place her remaining ARPA money in a town hall, New Town Hall Fund. To be used for expenses that are gonna come up, the architectural services for one. I'm gonna cross this, some money going forward, so that's my motion.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next is communications, Cal, and the four American Baptist Churches of Rhode Island, update?
Uh, yeah, we, we all, we all got this communication, which I think should be referenced in the minutes of the meeting tonight. I also think the public was, Sam, I, uh, wanted to know that, of what they, what we were told. So if I could, just, uh, for in case you didn't catch it, or anybody, um, would like to know, this, this, uh, communication comes from. Uh, this is from Abcory, uh, and this person is writing, who is the, the director. Uh, during its August meeting, Exeter, now, so, discussed the possibility that American Baptist Churches of Rhode Island, Abcory. Would be selling its canonicals camp and conference center property. I'm writing to let you know that the Abcory Board currently is working with the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management. For a conservancy of the three hundred acre property. Should there be further developments, I will keep you apprised. And it's signed Reverend Courtney Davis. Uh, I just, so that at least on the records, we've been told that they're attempting to conserve, which is what we had asked. And I happened to notice just as a, it, it's related, tonight's news talked about four hundred and eighty-some acres. I believe in Boroughville, the DEM has purchased for about one point six million to conserve. So my point is that this is exactly, I think, the kind of thing they're hoping for, yeah, canonicals.
The one thing that gets me with when they sent that letter, that's the EM, URI was sending out an RFP trying to find a use for the Alton Jones campus estate. Makes no sense.
Well, but URI owns that property.
They closed it down like four or five years ago.
Yeah, but that's Alton Jones, so they're trying to divest themselves.
Rotting away in the woods like the typical, the state of Rhode Island is.
Oh, not using it all?
No.
No, it's all closed down, but, but that's, Abcory wants the money, you know.
I thought I'm just making a comment, the state makes no sense, you know, here they are doing that out there, they're gonna, yeah. It's basically the, pretty much the same type of facilities when you look at it.
You know, it's just two different people that control it, one, the state, URI, and the other, whatever.
Okay.
These, these next two, uh, items, I'm sure that, uh, our plan or bill is well aware of what's happening in other communities. But I, I just make reference to them because the, these are, uh, uh, propositions, if you're proposals. To amend to accommodate some of the new, um, regulations that have come down that I'm pretty sure Jim, uh, Bill's rather already working on. But I just pulled them out and request that the clerk be sure that these are forwarded to, uh, for, just in case he didn't, uh, see them. And, uh, number ten, did I, what did I do that? Oh, oh, this is an interesting communication because somebody noticed that we're thinking about a town administrator. And, and I would just ask that we direct Lynn to respond, thank her for interest and tell this person, tell her that we're not in a position at this point. To move forward, which is not our, it's not our intent, is it our intent to move forward now? No, I know, we don't, even if we wanted to move forward, to have the money, we don't have an office, we. But anyway, I'd like, I'd like us to respond to this lady because it was nice to see someone in the community offer to help us. So that would be my motion.
Second.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do you guys have anything in executive decisions? So number thirteen is motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye. So there's no more, please.
I won't be all that smart.